Okay, I'm gonna call this Monday, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, Board of Equalization Special Meeting is the order. Roll call, Brett Towns.
Here.
Alan Thompson.
Here.
And I'm Patrick Crowley, the Chair. All right, uh, we have, first item is approval of minutes of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, discussion of possible action.
I move to approve all of the minutes.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there. That's our accepted first item on the agenda for the properties is BOE number twenty-six, Brooks Wright, I believe, just arrived. Uh, have you been here before?
No.
Okay, uh, I want you to know we're pretty informal here, but we have to follow the statutes. So, uh, what we will do is we will hear from you. You'll tell us what you want us to know about your property. You have a property at thirty-three, twenty-one northwest, one hundred and seventieth court?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we will, uh, hear from you first, then the assessor will say, you know, tell us why he's got his value set, and then you'll have an opportunity to respond to what the assessor says, okay?
Okay.
All right, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, tell us what you want us to know about your property at thirty-three, twenty-one northwest, one hundred and seventieth court.
Okay, uh, my property is two thousand three hundred and thirty-two feet. And so I simply did was, um, looked up, uh, eight most recent sales I could find in Rose Creek, which is where my property is in Rose Creek, uh, addition to my home, home of my city. And, um, I can actually give this to the board, it's a list, eight sales, the square footage for each of the eight sales, uh, I can list eight sales, thirty-three oh five, one hundred and seventieth, thirty-three, thirty-two, one hundred and seventy, one sixty-nine oh eight, rain, Riga, Riga goes to Rose, I mean, one sixty-eight. Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I sent in. So anyway, if you average those eight properties, it comes out to a hundred and seventy dollars and forty-three cents a foot. I actually went on my, uh, on the form that I submitted this, uh, Form of Appeal, County Order of Equalization year twenty twenty-three, I said a hundred and, so I went, uh, four dollars over the average of those eight sales, well, three dollars, hundred and seven, which were a hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-three cents to a hundred and seventy-four dollars, times the square footage, two thousand three thirty-two, and came to a value of four hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and I think that's a fair value.
Okay, so you're, you're saying, you think the value of your property is four hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, values have started dropping a little bit the last few months because of higher interest rates.
Right, well.
In the neighborhood.
Uh, what you need to understand what we're, where we're at, we have to determine what the fair market value of this property was on January first of this year. Events after that, uh.
I'll say for next year.
Yeah, there you go.
That's it.
When COVID set in, twenty, now that, you know, wasn't really an issue, twenty twenty-one was.
Right.
Okay, all right.
So anyway, my value is four hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars, based on a hundred and seventy-four dollars a foot.
So on your, on your comps that you've listed here, there's only two of them that are in twenty-two. The balance go from two eighteen, two twenty, two twenty-one, two twenty-one, and another two thousand twenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else you want to tell us about this property right now, or will we hear from the assessor?
Not at this time.
Well, I, you, in your informal, they started out at five hundred and forty-three and went down to five twenty-three. Is what you just said to us, what you presented to them, that caused them to drop it to five twenty-three?
Um, I don't think I had quite this thing. I had a couple of comps, but I went and did more, yes. Essentially, yes.
Here's a, here's another thing that you kind of need to understand, is the only evidence we can take into consideration, because this is our field, is the evidence that was presented at the informal hearing, not anything after.
Okay, well, what they had was.
Did you, did you appeal your last year's?
They had, they had all of these same comps that I did. They just had this list here. I had it on a different sheet. No, I did not. I wanted to, but we didn't get to it.
Um, on the, uh, sales information, I noticed, can you, can you explain to me how this has progressed? Because it looks like, you know, Brooks Wright didn't, purchased it in two thousand and five.
Yes.
Says as a distress sale.
Was it just land?
It was just land.
Just land, then, okay.
It wasn't a distress sale. There was, there was just land.
Okay.
And that was, yeah, just land from, uh, Rose Creek. Because no, I built the.
And then you built it.
Built the house.
Okay.
My eighty-seven-year-old mother lives in it, actually.
What did you build it for? How much did you build it for? Do you remember?
It was like two hundred and twenty thousand, two twenty-five, not counting the lot.
Okay.
And what year did you build it? Because you bought the land in two thousand and sixteen.
No, I bought it, bought the land in two thousand and.
Two thousand and five.
Fine, well, what happened in two thousand and sixteen?
Uh, we built it in two thousand and.
Maybe it was like, I think there was like a D transfer, it might have been a, because it went from the Brooks Wright IRA to the Equity Trust Company, custodian.
That was just the, they wanted me to, it's still in an IRA. It was in the, they wanted me to change the styling so that it, they, it was what the trustee requested as the correct way to list, have them listed as trustee for the property.
Okay.
But nothing changed other than just how they wanted the, the trustee's style and listed. Nothing changed on the physical property. So, um.
If I'm.
She moved, we finished it in, um, like, January of oh eight, it was built in oh seven.
If I'm figuring this right, you're asking sixty-three thousand less than your value of last year in twenty twenty-two. I show a value of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred last year.
Yes. We should have protested before. I just never have done it.
Okay. And what year, you built it in twenty sixteen?
No, we built it in oh seven.
Oh.
And it was occupied in like February, March of oh eight.
So you got this for your mom?
Yes, that's who she lives in there.
Oh, you're not living in the property?
No, I live in another house.
Okay.
Around.
But your mother lives there, she does.
Yeah, actually, I let her live at a rent fee, except she pays the taxes. That's the deal.
Okay.
Does she, does she have the senior freeze?
She can't.
She can't because she's not the owner.
That's right.
Yeah. How old do you have to be? I'm getting old, older too.
Right.
I'm sixty-seven.
Yeah, and then there's a, there's an income requirement, too.
Yeah, I don't think I qualify.
Yeah, I, I don't either.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else you want to tell us right now?
Not right now, okay.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
First, I want to show everyone where the house is in Rose Creek. Here's the subject property right here, where the arrows at, and then situated right along the golf course. So on Northwest one sixty-fourth and between Portland and May. Um, we had, we showed that the original, uh, asking price to be set down to is three eighty-eight, two ninety-four. That was during the informal protest. Um, he was on for four sixty-eight, five last year. Yeah, in twenty-one, he was on for four eleven, five. Um, really hasn't, as far as what the original request is, looking back all the way at least to thirteen, the closest we've ever gotten to that amount has been, um, back in two thousand and fourteen, when it was at four oh five, five seven two. So it's, it's kind of gone back and forth and all that, but it's definitely gone up in the last several years because of, well, obviously, the market and what people are paying for the properties. And his, his age is fifteen, and we have, uh, the, uh, the average age of the comps that were provided were fourteen point three three years old. Um, in the original report that we used, we did support a lowering. And, um, I also ran another comp report after the fact, because I wanted to kind of get an idea of what we were looking at, and we kind of, we can support the original value, too, but we thought with the first report that, uh, it was a little bit on the high side, but we can't get anywhere close to what he's asking for, and the best we can do is the, uh, what we lowered him to at five hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Were your comps newer than his?
Well, yeah, we're, um, the comps that we're using, let me pull that up. We're using, we got a twenty-two, yeah, we have all twenty-two sales.
Okay.
And then, of course, you know, we're accounting for the, uh, the adjustments that have to be made, plus the market trend. And that's where we, uh, support the value of coming down to five twenty-three. And that's all I have at this point.
We'll, uh, hear from the taxpayer in response.
I can tell you, I could not sell that house for anywhere near five hundred thousand. I'd, I don't think I can get over four hundred thousand. I could, I'd take this four oh five, I would sell it. I don't, it's not, I'm not trying to sell it, but the, uh, I just think my value is fair. It's based on everything that's, the average is selling of eight houses in that area. So I think four hundred and five thousand is a fair price.
Did you, did you take into account whether or not the ones you used had the same square footage and stuff that you had?
No, I just did, um, I didn't, I just did an average square footage for those homes and then averaged it out and did it on the square footage of uh, my house. I did go a little bit above. I went three dollars above. That's, uh, this house, I think, it is a little smaller than those.
Okay. But you're not saying that there's anything about the condition of your house particular you'd like?
No, it's fine.
All right, you understand that the assessor's using newer comps, the, the ones that sold in twenty twenty-two, which are, are more persuasive than, uh, comps from the old days.
Well, there's a comp here, uh, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, two thousand one ninety-seven, that's closer to the square footage, it's a hundred and seventy dollars, sixty-nine cents. And I'm at, actually, my average is one seventy ninety-three, and I'm saying one seventy-four, so I think that's comp.
Is that on the golf course? Because would you think the value on the golf course is higher?
Some of those are on great, one six six, can you pull up one six six oh five? Some of them are, if, if they can see the golf course, I don't, uh, another one in twenty-two is higher. I only see two in twenty twenty-two, but, um, this house is a villa house. The comp I just gave you is also a villa house. The other comp in twenty-two, I see, is, is not a, it's like an estate house. And it's bigger. Um, is one six six oh five, or? I would say it is on the golf course. There's only one house on that street that's not. It's on the corner. Rest of them back up to the golf course.
Where's the property, the assessor, where's the property?
Right here.
There's Riga Goza, you can see right down there. See the golf courses, that, they can see it on, the golf course on both sides of the road, Riga, those, does it have one six six? Can I drop, go, does it have one six six oh five up there?
Right here.
Yeah, so it's on the golf course. No, it's on a green, it's on a green belt. Golf course is down a little ways.
And that, that particular piece of property, I believe, is, my calculation is right, about three hundred square feet less than your house. Is that right?
That's a hundred. It's two thousand one ninety-seven on twenty-three thirty-two. It's a hundred and thirty-five feet.
Anything else you'd like to tell us?
No.
Okay, uh, anything else from the assessor?
No, I'm just going to point out the fact that, as we all know, that Rose Creek is a, it's like a buffet of, you know, differences when it comes to homes that are all, you know, custom-built and different varieties and all that. So what we're doing is we're having to use and come up with the best comps possible that require the least amount of adjustments. And you could have homes that might be not far from square footage, but they've got other characteristics that require such great adjustments. We can't use those. We have to require the minimum, most minimum amount of adjustments, and that's what we used in the three comps from twenty-two to come up with the value. And in this case, it did support a little bit of a lowering, and that's our, uh, bottom dollar right there.
Anything else from the taxpayer?
Well, this is a pretty simple house. I mean, I built it for my mom. It's not two-story. There's nothing elaborate. It's a simple structure, and it's not worth more than a hundred and seventy-four dollars a foot.
All right, that it?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to close the hearing on BOE number twenty-six. Thank you for your information. The letter will go out Friday on, on the decision of the board on that piece of property, and you should get it, uh, Saturday or Sunday.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good presentation.
Thank you. A lot of Rose, that's the third Rose Creek one I was here.
You what?
So that's the third Rose Creek one I was here.
I know, zoom in.
No, we don't want to find your brother's house.
No, no, he's on the house.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
That's us.
That's us.
There you go.
That's us.
I'm surprised we don't get that.
Chris, that's us.
Yeah, that'll lay a little out. It's anxious, look.
He's got mail.
Next on the agenda is BOE number twenty-three at ninety-three oh four.
That's us.
Right?
Broughton, we say broughton, like broughton.
And Christopher Ball?
Yes, sir.
And?
Jase.
Wife Jase.
Jase?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You saw how this?
I did. Made a pitch, but I heard, I didn't come near as prepared as that feller. I don't even know my square footage, but it's all right. We're going to get through this together.
We'll, we'll, we'll tell you, uh, if you put the square footage.
I bet they've got it. A hundred percent, the assessor over there's got the square footage.
Five eighty-six.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, tell us what you want us to know about your property.
No jokes, honey, just.
Serious, no jokes. This property, uh, is our marital home. We're going to be there until we check into Spanish Cove. Um, we bought it. Like I said in my informal protest sheet, I happily overpaid for this property because it's beautiful. I don't have twenty feet of backyard. It backs up to Spring Creek. Just two days ago, we got to watch a hawk swoop down, pick up a snake, and eat it.
It's beautiful.
We're in the city.
It may not be your thing, but we really enjoy it.
We have.
Is the sale date correct, uh, somewhere around May twenty-third last year?
June eighth.
June eighth, okay.
Or, yeah, the contract.
Sale date was my birthday, remember, and then we moved in on.
On June ninth?
Yes.
Right, okay, uh.
Sometime around May or June of last year.
Yes, sir.
And what did you pay for it?
Um, I thought I paid three eighty, but the records show I paid three eighty-five.
Okay.
Where did I get four ten from?
Because that.
That was the original list price.
The original list price was four hundred thousand.
Okay.
And we offered four-ten, and the nice lady accepted our offer. We had to do a bridge loan.
There were many other offers on the table, and we were supposed to do our final invest, and she accepted ours.
Okay.
So we needed to do a bridge loan for my bachelor house. Um, so the bank did an appraisal of Broughton Court. That one was submitted to Mr. Adam Hafman, um, and the bank appraisal is three hundred and seven thousand.
Three hundred and?
Seven thousand. She was a hundred thousand off. The tax notice I got, the tax on the house previous was two hundred and eighteen thousand. That's what?
Let's stop you right there.
Oh, okay.
We don't have jurisdiction, so we don't hear any evidence about the taxable value.
Oh, right, it was on my notice.
Okay, so cut that out.
So we had the cash to pay it over. Um, we don't even have a mortgage on this house. We own it. We had a mortgage for two months because I sold my bachelor pad, and we bought a marital home.
Can I, should I say something? When, when we had the, when we had the, uh, what's it called, the?
Appraisal.
The appraisal, it came back so much lower than what we had paid for the house, that we were able to renegotiate what we paid for the home, and I was not in on that negotiation. My husband was very exuberant about getting the home, and we did end up overpaying for this home, which.
I wrote that.
I, 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 in, in his naivete and excitement, I wish we had not done, because it's now biting us.
But what, what was the final sale price?
Three hundred and eighty-five?
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay, and that's what the doc stamps support?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, on my informal protest, besides the appraisal, I brought up the actual insurance value. If this home were wiped out, wiped completely off the map, the insurance company would give three forty-four nine for a rebuild. The value of a claim, and I provided it, uh, is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So the bank says three oh seven, the insurance company for a claim says three twenty-eight. For a complete and total rebuild, it's three forty-four nine. I agree that the taxes should be more than, I can't bring that up, I won't bring that up. An increase is definitely due. An increase to our purchase price, um, as long as we found somebody like us who could pay cash for the property, they might pay for the beauty of it, but the value, as listed by either the insurance company or the bank, uh, would be more appropriate than the purchase price. Somebody just bought an iPhone in the original package for sixty thousand dollars. Nobody really thinks the iPhones were sixty grand, but somebody paid for it.
I think what he's trying to say in that is that our house, if it were to be destroyed, there was no way we'd be able to rebuild the uniqueness of our home. It's, it's a one-bedroom home. It's beautiful, three, it's.
Carol Spence was an architect. He designed the house for he and his wife. They were the only owners. Karen Spence is the widow. We have a unique, one-of-a-kind, architect-built house.
I actually think you could come a little closer to replacement cost value, because you're not calculating in the value of your land, which you paid for in your original purchase. So, you know, add the land in, add the insurance value, you probably will come close to, uh, that value that you paid, or you could, you're coming closer.
Nice.
Because you guys are really, you're, you're actually saying right now, we did overpay. And with paying, what you pay for it does set the value of the home, and you're an assistant setting the value of the home.
And you understand, but first of all, when a bank loans you money on a piece of property, they build in a buffer, so that, you know, whatever the bank is allowing, is generally below, sometimes way below, what, uh, what the properties were. That same thing with insurance. Insurance is kind of a mushy deal. It kind of depends on what kind of insurance you have and how much you're paying for it. Uh, if you pay enough money for insurance, and I mean, they'll rebuild this for six hundred thousand dollars, but it's going to cost you.
Yes.
So, uh, you understand, that's, that's kind of not a, uh, much good evidence. What we, what we look at is what is the market value of this property on January first?
Yes.
Not today, because everybody knows, okay, property is starting to come down. Well, after January first, that's probably true, but we can't consider that. So what we're looking at is what was the recent sale? So.
Ours happened to be the highest.
That's not something to be proud of.
I'm glad you're all right.
You're not the only one to overpay.
Right.
Property, we, we're hearing that.
Especially in the past year, we, we bought a house for our daughter, and we didn't even get a chance to go see it. We ended up paying for it just because we needed the house, and we way overpaid for that house, too. It was awful during, during, when it, during the big.
Seventeen, seventeen, Northwest one forty-eight.
Okay.
Oh, there it is!
Bam!
Here's my baby!
All right, anything else? Now, you don't understand, we're going to come back to you.
Yeah.
To respond to the assessor, so is there anything else right now?
Not right now.
Okay.
Oh, man, how much land is?
Oh, we have a pie shape. As a matter of fact, if he goes to the backyard. Yes, and you can't even see our neighbor behind us. It's so, when, when the trees, now, in the winter, you could see the neighbor behind it, but you have to be on where his arrow is to see the neighbor, the neighbor on the north side or at the top of the screen.
You can't see when we're on porch.
When you're in our backyard, you can't even see him. The neighbor on the south side, they have to be on the corner of their deck, and we have to be on the corner of our deck. It's amazing how private it is. Spring Creek is awesome. Coyotes, foxes, uh, blackberry, possums.
What, what, what mile sections, Mike?
Oh, sorry, you are on West Britton Road and North MacArthur.
We can pull out of our neighborhood and go right down Britton and ride into Lake Hefner. Not that we're meant to, but.
Right.
Don't drive in the lake. If you want a, if you want a far-out view, here's Lake Hefner and.
What's the name of the lake?
Land's.
Land'sburg.
Oh, I know where that is. I used to live in Eagle Lakes.
Oh, you understand them.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Anything else right now?
Oh, we were waiting on the assessor.
Yeah, we're still grateful to be here, is all we can say.
Best civics lesson since elementary.
It's so exciting.
All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
I mean, other than what's already been said, they happily overpaid for a truly one of a kind, beautiful house in the trees.
We call it a treehouse, folks.
But yeah, we, we have them on for one thousand dollars more than what they paid for it, so they're not, they're right there. Um, what, we, looking at all the comps, they have a unique situation where they've got a near one thousand square foot basement. That is not technically included in the square footage, but it's, it's a nice added feature. And the other comps that we've used to support the current value, or, uh, that I looked at just to kind of get an idea of what they're doing, they don't, none of them else have a basement, so they've got, they're the only ones that have a basement. Um, their sale price per the appraisal was four hundred and ten thousand, and then, you know, like they said, that it appraised at three hundred and seven grand. And we looked, I, just for my own, you know, benefit, I looked at, you know, comps going for that area. And the, the values do support a lower value, but the problem is with what they paid for it, they're setting the market value, so there's really not much we can do there. And it is a beautiful home. If you look at some of the, uh, pictures and of the interior.
Yeah, it's so beautiful.
But.
You'll see the view of the creek coming up.
That's my kitchen.
If you need me to slow down, I can slow down too. Yeah, wood beams go throughout.
But that's not the neighborhood that had the flooding a couple of years ago. Something out in that area.
Not that I'm aware of.
Uh, the.
Of course, Silver Lakes north of there, it always floods.
Is that, that was it, that was it, okay.
That's my bathroom.
It's amazing.
The ba, the window looks out while I'm doing my makeup right there under the window.
It looks like they've had pretty extensive remodel at some point.
Actually, no. Um, the, the remodel was just the bathrooms. The kitchen was never redone. The, the, the big, the big seller on the thing was that they had a new washing machine in the kitchen.
Dishwasher.
The bathrooms were redone in, I think, two thousand seventeen.
The laundry room is a complete cinder block.
Big basement?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's the basement, bathroom.
That house has just been really well made, well built to begin with.
Yes, sir.
Well maintained.
And the, the nice widow who sold it.
That's our, that's our tornado shelter.
That is.
It's a tornado shelter.
It's a tornado shelter.
Cement walls and everything. I have closed my husband down in there whenever he's bad.
Is that, is that the basement?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, the basement's kind of a built-in shelter.
Yes, sir.
But that room in particular.
That's my patio.
Uh-huh. And see how we, that, that stone walkway, we don't own it. That's not part of our property. So, literally, our twenty feet of backyard, uh.
It drops down.
Has no grass.
Yeah.
And all of it is spring creek. Uh, it's very beautiful.
And it's corland.
There are ducks.
Isn't that right?
No.
Is that, is that wrong?
It could be corland. It's, blame the city.
We don't, they don't maintain it, is what I'm.
Right, it's completely wild.
Yeah, so other than the fact that there's just not much else to really talk about, other than the fact that they set the market value at the three eighty-five, and that's all we have to go off of.
Yeah. And you understand that the last purchase price, particularly if it's recent, and this one is, is the greatest evidence of what the market value is. Now, I understand everybody's overpaying and all that, but we don't, we don't consider that. What we look at is what a willing buyer, willing to pay the willing seller's price. And you negotiated it down, I presume, so, uh, you'd come up with three hundred and eighty-five thousand in June of twenty-twenty-two. So, that, that's compelling evidence of what the value of this property is. And, uh, it is a beautiful home.
Thank you.
It's set in a great spot, so, uh, it's, it's hard to, we have to set the market value based on what a willing buyer, a, a willing seller, so, uh, having said that.
We get to re-bye?
Yeah, you get, you get to respond to the assessor's, uh, value when, uh, when they're done.
Sorry, I thought he was.
I don't know.
What, oh, no, I'm. I'm done, yes.
He is done?
Yes. Eddie, appreciate your wisdom, because this is the first go-round for both of us. Um, he did say the comps support a lowering, which is fine, even if we got down to what the heck ever you all decided. I'm happy with it, and I just wanted to point out that as the comps go, I didn't do any of that square foot work that I heard the other nice feller do.
We didn't know.
I can't tell you what the square footage is going in the neighborhood. What I do know is a week after our house sold, a house.
Right next door.
Right next door, sold at two twenty. Um, now, it's considerably smaller. They have the same creek view.
And they did as is.
We did as is.
Oh.
Right, uh, the, the.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir, um, but basically, you could have dropped one of my daughter's houses on top of the house next to us, 'cause it is significantly smaller. But if we just did on the price per square foot like that feller was talking about, and I don't have any of that information, I'd leave it to the assessor. Just the fact that he said the comps would suggest a lowering, I'm satisfied with that. Uh, I don't, I can't do any of those calculations.
And we're grateful for your time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, let's see. I think we show three thousand five hundred and eighty-six square feet.
Not counting the basement.
Yeah, there's a basement.
How come basements?
And I think, I, I think that includes the basement.
I'm pretty sure that includes the basement.
Not including the basement, we have two thousand four hundred and sixty square feet.
Two thousand?
Two thousand four hundred and sixty.
High five to the assessor. Oh, sorry. Use the hands, sir.
Honey.
What?
Honey.
I felt like I didn't do my homework when I heard all of it.
Take a deep breath.
Well, yeah, look, the first time, we think all that in consideration. Anything else you wanna tell us about this property?
No, sir.
New thing?
Oh, oh, yeah, no, um, I mean, the bachelor pad I got rid of, I only owned it for eight years. That's true. In that eight-year time, my bachelor pad doubled in value. I sold it for two hundred and ten thousand. I bought it for a hundred grand. In, uh, twenty-fourteen, I, I paid a hundred thousand dollars for my bachelor pad, which we used as the trade-in for this house. So, undoubtedly, this house is gonna be where he'd like it to be. It's gonna, I will not lose money on the investment, 'cause I'm young enough. We're gonna live there long enough. The value will get there. I don't believe the value's there today, and I'm looking forward to the next twenty years when that value will be there.
Well, you understand that the assessor has set the value at just a thousand dollars more than you paid for it in June of twenty-two.
Right.
Yeah, but the thing I latched on to is that the comps suggest a lowering would be appropriate.
Next year.
Yeah, he didn't say it suggests a lowering, otherwise he'd have lowered it. Uh, he's just saying the comps in that area, uh, are hard to apply to this property. Uh, because no matter what the comps say, what, what a willing buyer paid a willing seller in June of twenty-two, and that value is three hundred and eighty-five thousand. And if, if they do you up a thousand, so using your, your property as an example, it'd take a hundred years to get. That, it ain't gonna take that. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
Anything from the assessor?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on B O E twenty-three. We're gonna thank you, you, even though you think you were not prepared, that was a good presentation.
Yay, honey, yes! You did good! Thank you, Gary.
Oh, thank you all so much. Hey, come see us again next year.
We will.
I, I mean, I hope you don't have to, I guess, but, hey, just come say hi.
It's so nice to meet all of you. This has been so much fun.
The best, the best thing is enjoy your home.
Yes.
Oh, it's a beautiful home, beautiful home.
Thank you so much.
All right, our next one will be appearing back now. Yeah, sure. Oh, shoot. You're good, you got a little off balance. There we go. Network is slow today. Yeah, all right, there we go. All right, there you go. I will go ahead and give Linda Cutter a call.
Hello, this is Linda.
Hi, Ms. Cutter, this is Patrick.
Yes.
This is Patrick Croll, Chairman of the, uh, Board of Equalization. Uh, we have a full board here today. And, uh, we're got, we look like, we're looking at your property here at one oh seven one-two Sunset Boulevard. And that's in the village, right?
Yes, sir.
And.
Pull that up on the map.
Your, the assessor has, at, uh, after the informal hearing, has set a value of three hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred. And then adjusted it downward at three hundred and forty-nine thousand. And you're asking two hundred and forty, is that right?
Yeah, in that vicinity. Uh, the problem is, there is a builder here in the village that's built all of these big fancy houses just recently. And I know that probably is affecting the rent, I mean, the taxes somewhat. But if we were to sell our house now, there is no way we would ever get that amount of money.
Okay, and I'll, uh, I'll tell you, at the, at the get-go, because you mentioned taxes, we have no jurisdiction to hear the taxable value. Only thing we are trying, we're trying to do is set the market value of this property on January first of this year.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, so, uh, let's see, how many square feet you got there?
Well, including the garage, it's eighteen forty.
I don't think they included the garage in the square feet.
But did you convert your garage into living space?
No, no. That's just what I was informed, that, uh, more than likely, the house was eighteen forty, including the garage. I was told that. I have, no one has been out there to measure, to see exactly how much we have excluding the, uh, garage. And that's just what I was told.
Well, the assessor shows the square footage at a thousand eight hundred and thirty-six square feet, and that will not include the garage.
Okay.
And, uh, okay, so go ahead and tell us what, anything you wanna tell us about this property?
Well, I'm just saying that, uh, I do not believe the property is worth anything, what it's valued. The first time I, uh, actually sent in one of these, uh, appeals, it was only valued at three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then I get the next one, and it's three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And I just think it's way too high for the, the, the square footage and the, uh, age of the house.
Can you tell me what, when, when you bought your house and what you paid for it?
Well, we built the house back in two thousand and four, and our, our loan was four hundred thousand. Now, we did have to buy the property, the land itself, and I, I don't remember now what we paid for that, but I think it was somewhere around twenty thousand.
Good. Now, while, while the assessor did initially, uh, set the current fair cash value at three hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred, uh, he has come down to three hundred and forty-nine thousand, which.
Yes, sir.
Is still a far cry from two hundred and forty that you're asking, which is over a hundred thousand dollars less.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah. I was, I just included some properties that were in our area that was approximately eye square footage. Now, they probably were a little older. I don't know how old they were, but most of them ran anywhere from the low two, the two hundred thousands up to the high two hundred thousand. I think there was one that was three hundred and twelve.
Okay. All right, anything else that you wanted to add? The way this works, we're gonna, we're listening to you first, then we'll listen to the assessor, and then you will have an opportunity to respond to the assessor, okay?
Okay.
So, anything else initially that you wanna tell us?
Uh, no, sir. I just think it's over, I think it's overpriced.
Okay. All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
First, I wanna let the board know, uh, of the map of where the house is located, on, uh, West Hefner and North May. And here's her property right here, real close to Lake Hefner Parkway. And here's her property right here.
All right.
And we, she did, Ms. Cutter did provide some further, um, evidence after the informal appeal did take place. The problem is, we can't use any of those properties because they were all sold in twenty-three. And anything in twenty-three, obviously, we cannot use. And they may have a bearing next year, but we just don't know yet until that happens. But we initially ran, uh, comps to currently support the value, even though we did, which means it also came down a little bit, and that's why we arrived at the three forty-nine. The average age of the comps that we provided are twenty years old. She is nineteen years old. Last year, the value was, uh, three twenty-five, and the year before that, it was two hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred. And just based on, you know, what people are paying for in these, in the area, and then based on the comps that we used, using also the adjustments and market trend, we currently support the value of where we're at right now, and that's even with coming down a little bit to three forty-nine.
Did you hear the assessor, Ms. Cutter?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
All right, I think he is, uh, finished, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, any responses you wanna offer?
No, I just, uh, like I said, if I were to try to sell my house today, I know I would not get that much money, three hundred and forty-nine thousand. I know I wouldn't be able to, and that was why I was, why I was trying to get it down some. Not that I wouldn't like to get that much, I just don't think I could, because one of the houses, and I know that you said you can't take two thousand and, uh, twenty-three, but one, the house, one of the houses I sent the picture of is two houses down from us, and it was sold at, uh, two ninety-five.
Yeah, we're, we can't consider, actually, we, we can't consider any evidence that was not presented at the informal hearing. Uh, but we're gonna listen to it because the assessor brought it up and then addressed it, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And that was in August of, uh, twenty-two, that sale date, and it was two ninety-five, and it was two houses down from us. And it was $295,000, and it was two houses down from us.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir. I was just, like I said, just trying to get the value down some.
Ms. Cutter, what was the address of that house that you referenced right there?
Hold on, I just, let me get back to it. Hold on a minute, because I've got all these papers here, and I'm sorry, but I. Okay. Well, I know I just had it, because I was just looking at it. I'm sorry, I'm holding you guys up.
No, you're fine, because I can't find it either.
Yeah, well, it was a picture that I took.
10334.
Of the house that was two houses down.
Could it be 10334?
Uh, that's probably, no, because that one is $390,000. No, the one that I, this one is one of those new houses that was just recently built. And, and the, the one, yeah, these are all new houses. A builder by the name of Mollfords came in and bought up a bunch of land. Okay, uh, here it is. Okay, it's, I'm sorry, it's not next, not two houses down from us, it's the next string over. It is account number, I don't know if you're going by account number, but.
Address, address is better.
Oh, 10304 Sunrise Boulevard in the Village.
Okay, so 10304 Sunrise Boulevard in the Village. We have that one as a, it's a slightly older home, and we make an adjustment for that. And it's 1,723 square foot. And that gets, it sold for $295,000 in August of last year, but when we factor in the, all the adjustments and the market trend, we come out at $359,325,000.
Oh, for that house?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Mark, remember.
Okay. Okay, well, I don't have anything else to say. I just know all these new houses being built in the Village, I know is affecting us. And I just know my house would not sell to them. But anyway, whatever you guys decide, that's the way it'll be.
Well, you're right about that, but you know, a letter will, a letter will go out Friday after we've reached a decision, after the board reached a decision on it. And we will try and set what we feel like is the fair market value of that property on January 1st of this year.
Okay, okay. That'll be just fine.
Ms. Cutter, I appreciate it. It was a nice presentation, especially doing it over the phone. We appreciate you, and I said, let her go out Friday, okay?
Okay, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bye. All right, I'll close the hearing on BOE number 16. I believe that's the last one on the ballot today. Any comment from the board?
I've already looked at the ones for Thursday. Is that the one where the guy wanted us all to be here?
So, yes, so we're set for the next couple of weeks. So on the 30th, Thursday, that'll be our next hearing. Because that one does deal with what's actually in the board's jurisdiction to set. I do want to have Gretchen Crawford, the assessor's legal counsel here. I'm gonna reach out to her and see if she can be here. That's also the one that he has requested all three are here.
Which one is it?
Uh, that's Grant Beatles. I don't remember specifically what his number is.
Yeah.
B-E-A-B-L-E, yes. Yes, and he is, he is from.
31st, 31st will be decision day. Next week, we will only have two meetings, because I know Mr. Towne, he will not be available on the 6th.
Correct.
Okay, so because of that, and because we actually aren't gonna have access to the room for most of that week, we're just gonna be Monday, and then that's the third decision day, Saturday, or Friday, which is the 7th. The following week, we will have three days. It will be a heavier week. We're gonna have the 10th, just a normal load. However, on the 11th and 12th, those are all gonna be Ogle assets, which is one of those real estate, you know, companies that buys all the property. Not sure where they're based, but I think they're actually based locally. But, so we'll actually have 11 between those two days. It's all basically the same argument they've said. Decision day will be that Friday to 14th, and that's as far as I've said so far.
Nothing on Thursday this week?
Uh, no. In fact, Thursday, the court has finally decided it's closed, so.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, good, I won't be here.
Because we vote Tuesday.
Yes, and I will make notes to the following week. We haven't said yet, but decision day will be on Thursday.
All righty. Well, it was fun. All right, so we're done till?
Uh, yes, we stopped through adjournment.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There's no citizens here, so the board doesn't have anything. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All of them favorite.
All right, we're now adjourned.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I got distracted there.